All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. We are going to call roll and then we'll call our meeting to order and we'll be taking up one item on the agenda, which will be a resolution. So if you would, Chief Clerk, please call names, call roll.
Alderman Carver.
Present.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Present.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Walker. Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum and with one showing absent, that would be Alderman Walker. We will call the meeting to order. If you would please, anything we do, which will be this resolution, that's what we're looking at, is we will obviously have the roll call and our continuation of keeping that schedule up. We'll also allow each one of the Aldermen to have an opportunity to comment on this. But I have asked for this special call meeting because, subsequent to the Governor's order that he issued on Friday, which is Governor's Order 1477, I felt it appropriate that we act further as it relates to how we respond to the COVID-19 virus in concert with his order. And so to that end, what we have on the agenda is the consideration of further board actions and City of Starkville response to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic with a fourth resolution. And I'm going to take this opportunity to read the relevant portions of this resolution so that it'll just, I'm going to hit the highlights because it's rather long because we keep adding to it based on the things over time. And so I'm just going to hit a couple of the highlights of it and then I'm going to ask the Chief real quickly to give us just an update on his thoughts about the, his experience and his thoughts about the curfew and the need for one. So if y'all give me just a few minutes, I'll be, I'll be quick as possible. So the first whereas, the first and only whereas I'm going to read actually, is the, whereas on April 24th, 2020, Governor Reeves issued Executive Order 1477 implementing a statewide safer-at-home order, expanding the definition of essential activities to include operation of a business and performance of job duties, expanding the definition of essential travel to include travel to and from work, stating that all businesses and nonprofit entities may remain open or reopen subject to limitations, and expanding the definition of healthcare activities to include non-emergent elective medical and dental procedures and surgeries, among other things. And then moving to the now-there-fors, be it resolved by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville that the city hereby adopts the following emergency measures that shall take effect immediately and remain in effect until rescinded by the governmental authority of the City of Starkville unless a different effective date and date for continuing effectiveness is stated in such measures to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community from the spread of a contagious or infectious disease and to eliminate or limit injuries or deaths that may occur in the absence of such measures. Section 1, the City of Starkville hereby adopts the findings and regulations set forth in the Executive Order 1477 as signed by Governor Tate Reeves. On April 24th, 2020, the city fully adopts the broad intent of that order, including the references and applicable incorporation of portions of previous executive orders, 1463, as supplemented 1466 and 1473. Section 2, all businesses, agencies, and units of government located within the City of Starkville shall take all reasonable measures to ensure that such businesses comply with the CDC and the Mississippi Department of Health recommendations and guidance and shall implement, all right, hang on just a second, I'm going to-
Alderman Walker's having trouble dialing in.
Okay. Alderman Walker?
I'm here, sorry.
All right, I'm going to leave you, I'm going to put you on my phone here on conference call so we can hear you. Can you hear me now?
I can.
All right, okay, we will count you as in the meeting and I'll continue reading if that's all right.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the city fully adopts the broad intent of that order, including the references and applicable incorporation of portions of previous executive orders, 1463, as supplemented 1466 and 1473. Section 2, all businesses, agencies, and units of the government located within the City of Starkville shall take all reasonable measures to ensure that such businesses comply with the CDC and the Mississippi Department of Health recommendations and guidance and shall implement appropriate safeguards to prevent the spread of infectious disease, including but not limited to mandating social distancing, sending home sick employees, and actively encouraging sick employees to stay- ... home, separating and sending home employees who appear to be, to have respiratory illness symptoms, emphasizing work-from-home policies where possible, mandating respiratory etiquette and proper hand hygiene, maintaining clean and sanitary workplaces, cautioning employees regarding travel, and taking all such additional measures to prohibit and/or reduce the spread of infectious disease and especially COVID-19. Section 3, all businesses open to the public shall require their employees to wear face coverings effective 8:00 a.m. on April 28th, 2020 through 8:00 a.m. on May 11th, 2020 to align with the timeframe of the Governor's Safer-at-Home Executive Order 1477. Employees shall properly wear face coverings, ensuring coverage over mouth and nose. Management must provide adequate supervision to ensure that employees comply with face coverings. Section 4, a general curfew shall continue in the city limits of Starkville from 10:00 p.m. until 5:00 a.m., except for essential travel or essential activities as those terms are defined in the Governor's Executive Order 1477. This curfew remains effective through 5:00 a.m. on May 11th, 2020 to align with the timeframe of the Governor's Executive Order 1477. If the Governor extends the timeframe of Executive Order 1477, this curfew shall also extend to be consistent with it. This curfew may also be amended at any time by motion and order of the governing authorities of the City of Starkville. Section 5, the city may issue such other orders as are necessary for the protection of life and liberty. And Section 6, the penalties for violation of this adopted resolution shall be the same as those listed in the ordinance amending Chapter 1 Code of Ordinances of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, general provisions, which the city adopted on or about May 20th, 2020. And other than that, the remainder is just who moved, who made the resolution, the adoption, and then who seconded and the following vote. So with that, that is the resolution. I know everyone had an opportunity to take a look at it. Chief, if you would be so kind as to give us your thoughts on the curfew, its effectiveness, and why you believe that it needs to continue.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. First of all, if we go back, every day we're learning a little bit more about COVID-19. We learned from the curfew. We initially started out in an uncoordinated effort, whereas we saw surrounding jurisdictions, the county, others start to implement curfews that unfortunately historical suffered by people coming here to have their parties versus remaining in their hometowns or home jurisdictions. We, with considerable effort, outstanding effort from the men and women in the Starkville Police Department, we've seen a steady drop in enforcement, actions that have been needed. The educational program has been strong during the curfew and now the streets are relatively quiet. It's something that's, you know, attributed to their hard work, but they have been able to apprehend it during this curfew. Alderburgers, burglars, just Friday night, an individual that was wanted for murder from a roadblock. So the average working person is not, what we're seeing and talking to Sheriff Laddening, and I agree with him, the average working person from 10 to 5 is not deeply affected by this curfew, but a lot of the public safety, public health is impacted. Parties, clarity in understanding the law, people understand the curfew. So from our standpoint, from the police department's standpoint, we're structured for it, we're built for it, and we're seeing effective reasoning with the curfew that we're winning it. And to change protocol now, we would, we'd say, I would ask, please state the course with the curfew.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief. Okay, having said all of that, knowing what is in front of you, let's start Alderman, Alderman Carver, would you like to make some comments as it relates to this particular resolution?
I would. I mean, in my comments for the curfew, as long as you, you know, follow the Governor's guidelines and dates on that, I'm fine with that. As far as the mandatory face covering for employers and employees, I'm probably going to vote against for that measure. Part of the reason is I'm a big proponent of herd immunity and honestly, you know, on the onset of any pandemic or anything like this, you don't know how high the curve is going to get. And it's already, in my opinion, past the curve. I just did a little simple math on driving down the road right now and took the 5,316 confirmed cases in the state of Mississippi and that, I put 2.9 million people, you're looking at a number, 0.0018% chance of catching it right now. I know it'll, you know, probably the numbers will spike when people open back up and the students come back in the fall, but personally, you know, just don't have a lot of fear over this pandemic right now. And so I, you know, not a big mask wearer. People I've talked to in the medical field, you're already starting to see studies come out saying we're well over the curve and coming down. I enjoyed reading Dr. Cameron Huckford's article in the paper, really just solidified that what's going to be called personal responsibility. If you've got immune system deficiency, if you're an elderly person, if you do have here, you know, each and every person, as with everything in life, knows their health situation. And if it's something that you need to have a mask and gloves on, so be it. If you're not an individual, if you're an 18 to 45, 50-year-old and good health, I mean, honestly, I just not, I'm not a fan of it for those individuals. Call it personal responsibility. Each and every person has that freedom of choice to whether or not to wear a mask. That's going to be my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Carver. And just to tack on that, the numbers from today are, Attica County is holding at 46 cases. Mississippi is now up to 6,094 cases, which is an increase of 100 and something. And we have 229 deaths, which are up too from yesterday. So that's just a tag on to that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
I'm going to finish my comments, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I apologize.
No, no, I run those numbers. It comes now to 0.0017. So I mean, at the end of the day, I'm just, I think we reacted well early on. However, I do think that this is something we're going to have to live with for months and months on end. And I, you know, speak to a plethora of all types of people all day. And if you're 60-plus and you've got health, you know, issues, you probably should be wearing a mask for long-term till vaccines available for, for the general public, you know, the 99 and a half percent, there's not a lot of concern now. I don't think this is as deadly a strain as we might have predicted early on, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman Carver. Alderman Sistrunk.
I'm going to defer my comments until Alderman Vaughn has a chance to make his points that he wanted to about masking. And I've got something I want to tag on to that when he does that.
Okay, all right. Alderman Little.
I'm okay with continuing the curfew for a couple of weeks. I really don't care for the Section 3 with adding the mask and agree with several of the comments that Alderman Carver had to say. We haven't been in a hotspot and, you know, we're about seven, eight weeks into it now and we haven't required the mask early on. And now to come in late in the game and apply that, I think, you know, is a little restricted. And I think that comes down to personal choice. And I think most of the businesses here in town have done well with setting up Plexiglas barriers at the checkpoints when checking out and distancing and, and most of their employees at Kroger have been wearing masks when I've noticed when I've been in there. I just, I just think this may be a little bit overreach on our part and those that are concerned and have underlying health issues and elderly should most continue to shelter in place, but I'd like to stay consistent with the Governor's current order.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Alderman Little. Alderman Walker.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of both measures. I look at this through May 11th, that's a couple of weeks. I, the data that I've seen and what's being reported shows that it's prudent at this time to wear a mask. I think it would also help with citizens being out, those that are maybe a little more fearful, see that the business community is taking this serious as indicated, like you see there, a lot of businesses that are open right now where they're already wearing a mask. So I'm in support of this measure through May 11th.
All right, thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty.
Mayor, I support the measure to add the face mask requirement. This is a dangerous infectious disease and we've maybe hit the top or start the plateau or something here. We've only done that because we've had some stringent measures placed on our citizens to be able to stop, slow this thing down. As people start to mix together, we're certainly going to see some more cases. And I know that mitigating or playing down the risk or severity of this stuff is one thing, and it may be to a 25 or 30, 35-year-old or a 65-year-old health. There's a segment of our population that if they're exposed to and contracted stuff or don't have a serious issue with it. And the thing about it is we forget when we go to a store, if we contract it or we get it, we may be, what's the term, asymptomatic, just we're just carrying it around then. When we carry it home to grandma and grandfather, one of them gets it, and it's a lot serious for them and it is, you know, for the younger person that they got it when they went to, you know, to a store or something like that. So I mean, you know, it's, it looks like on the surface, and maybe it is, an impediment on our personal freedom to do, you know, what we want to do and how we want to do and things like that. These are extraordinary times when we've got to, you know, and I'm all for personal freedoms and constitutional rights to do what, you know, what the Constitution allows us to do. At the same time, this is something we've got to give a handle on and it's going forward, it's going to be a while. And I'll just say that on Henry's proposal to add this to the, to the measure, to the resolution, that if I'm in a store, everybody's got a mask on, I've got one, man, I feel a little bit safer about being in that store. You know, I'm still going to practice social distancing, part of the thing, but I don't know, maybe long-term, you know, not long-term, but at least intermediate term, that helps people's confidence in going back into a store and purchasing or something. I go to the grocery store every week, I wear a mask when I go in there. Most people have a mask on, practice social distancing, but it kind of works and I kind of feel better about having the thing on. It's appropriate time, you know, those masks will start to come off, we'll start to get back to some sense of, or whatever, the new, what we consider to be the normalcy. But, you know, I think it's, at this point in time, I think it's a good idea. I yield. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman Beatty. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, and to my distinguished colleagues, given the coronavirus pandemic and the environment that we are now in, I am of the strong opinion that we, as a governing body, has an ultimate duty to enact measures that are reasonably necessary to curb the spread of this coronavirus. Number one, Mayor, with that being said, the curfew is reasonable. We've heard from the expert of the City of Starkville, Police Department, our Police Chief, and he concurs that and recommends that we extend the curfew. For those reasons, I support that. I support the, the resolution as it is written. We need to require all businesses, as it is written, to require their employees to wear a mask effective 8 o'clock in the morning through 8 o'clock, May 11th, 2020. And what that does is it strongly mandates that, that the City of Starkville is doing everything that is reasonably necessary to promote the health and safety of those within our jurisdiction. And secondly and finally, Mayor and Honorable Board members, is that I am also in support of our requiring all persons who enter these businesses are likewise required. Why do we need to do that? Because we are trying to enact every measure that is reasonably necessary and proper to curb the spread. So if we do that, then, then we can get a better handle on this, this curbing the spread of this coronavirus. So with all these reasons, Mayor, I support the curfew, I support the language that require all businesses to ensure that their employees shell. That's mandatory. And if anybody violates that, then they need to be ticketed. You know, we are serious about this because this virus is serious. And also I'm in favor of adding the language in the resolution that require all persons who go in all these businesses to wear these face covering or masks that covers the face and the nose to be, have the same effective date. So Mayor, I'm in support of all the measures that I just articulated and I agree with the gentleman from, also from Ward's 4 and 5, and I yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn.
Well, I'm in agreement with the Governor's orders, because I mean, why would we go to the store and they got masks on and then we go to the store and we don't have a mask on? I don't think that's right to the employees and I really don't think it's right to the citizen, or that we don't go in there. When I go in a store right now, every store I am, I put a mask on. I may not have it on when I come, when I'm walking around, but when I go in a store, I put a mask on and I take it off when I get on outside. But I think, I think it's right and I think it's very feasible and I think it's the right thing for the City of Starkville to do, that we enforce that, that everyone entered a business, they need to have a face covering. It don't have to be a mask, it need to be a face covering of some type.
Okay, it can be a bandana. I think there's been a lot of information put out that a double cotton bandana would do just as well as anything else, so.
That's it, and I support the curfew and all, so, you know, I'm in favor of the motion that Vice Mayor made.
We're going to have to find, find a motion. I'm waiting. Mr. Latimer?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have some language crafted?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Sistrunk, I apologize. That's what you get when I pass you by, dear.
I deferred, but I'm, I would like to say, I'm supportive of all these measures. Based on my observance, Saturday morning at the community market, there was a lady there who had a child with her who was about three and had a really hard time keeping that mask on that child that was three. So Alderman Vaughn, would you consider exempting children five and under or something like that from, from having to have the face mask? I know there won't be that many of them out.
I will, even though, even though I believe they the carrier, but I will.
Oh, they absolutely, they absolutely can be a carrier. You're right.
Anything, anything further, Alderman Sistrunk?
No, no, ma'am, that's all.
Mr. Latimer, I want to circle back to you. Any legal impediment as it relates, or what, exposure as it relates to excluding children?
No, in fact, the draft that I was working on, I had a six-year-old limit because I've seen that in some other resolutions. And the theory being, it's tough to have anybody younger than that keep a mask on or find a mask that'll fit a young face like that. So the way I've drafted it right now is six years old, but we could certainly do five if y'all wanted to go down a year. That's at the Board's discretion.
Even at six.
Okay. All right, so Chris, do you have that language done?
I do. I just, I played with Section 3 while you guys were talking and just added some customer language to it. So Section 3, if you want to add the customers to the coverage, it would read as follows. "All businesses open to the public shall require their employees and customers over the age of six years old to wear face coverings effective 8:00 a.m. on April 28th, 2020 through 8:00 a.m. on May 11th, 2020 to align with the timeframe of the Governor's Safer-at-Home Executive Order 1477. Employees and customers shall properly wear face coverings, ensuring coverage over the mouth and nose. Management must provide adequate supervision, including door monitors, to ensure that employees and customers entering the store comply with face coverings and to prohibit entrance to those not wearing face coverings."
Great job, attorney. I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry, Mayor. Great job on the drafting, Mayor. Great job on the drafting, lawyer.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
To prohibit entrance, what was the last, from, from those not wearing masks?
Yeah, and to prohibit entrance to those not wearing face coverings.
Okay, all right. I'm jotting this down, so, and I don't have a motion yet, so if anyone wants to make a motion with the, who am I speaking with? Is that Vice Mayor?
So moved, this Vice Mayor, so moved, Mayor.
All right, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Perkins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that, please?
Arnold.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty, all right. All right, I did hear, I think, Alderman Carver, did you want to make a comment?
I just had a couple of quick questions. If somebody were to enter a place of business about covering, what is the fine they would receive?
Under our current ordinance, it would be a violation of these COVID-19 regulations and it would be that $1,000 fine, Alderman Carver.
That's an up two, though. That's, that's an up two.
That's the cap. That's correct.
And also, we've got a lot of transient people that come through and they're stopping at a gas station to fill up and go in and get them something. Should businesses not, I mean, how, if that person doesn't know about their ordinance and they're coming through across the state for essential travel and they don't have a mask, how do they get to the store?
That's what the door monitor is for.
I'm saying if they don't personally own a mask, I mean, does the business not have to provide a set number of some on-site?
We just lose that business.
Well, if, if, if I was the business owner, let me just say for me personally, if I was a business owner, I believe I would have some available for those who were unable to if I wanted to maintain them. But that's, again, that's that, that's that business owner's decision.
So should we word something that they provide masks to individuals that don't have one?
Mr. Latimer, that would be added up to you.
Come, come.
Mr. Latimer?
Yes, ma'am, we could certainly add that if we, if that's the pleasure of the Board. I think that's discretionary, whether or not to put that duty and obligation on the business.
Slippery slope.
Yep, well, okay. Alderman Carver, I recognized you. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, ma'am, just that thought.
Okay, all right. Alderman Sistrunk, you spoke, but I, since I didn't recognize you, did you have any other thoughts about that?
I, I think it's cumbersome to say the business has to provide the mask. Certainly businesses that want to can and will, but, but I would leave that to the discretion of the business owner.
Okay. Alderman Little, I think I heard you as well. Was that the slippery slope comment?
It was.
Anything further?
No, y'all know where I stand on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Alderman Walker.
No, Mayor, other than to make sure in that motion it does say it ends with May 11th or as otherwise defined.
Okay, all right, it is, it is in that resolution. Alderman Beatty.
Mayor, I'm sure that all of us understand and know the Chief would back this up, that this, the, the fine associated with this is not designed to be punitive. It's just designed to say, this, it's important enough for all of us to comply with this that we have a fine up to a certain amount associated with people who just disregard it. We can't do that. If we're going to have, if we're going to say face mask, everybody should have one on, I don't know what stores can have, I don't know what stores can stock enough of those things to have, but, but I mean, at some point in time, the store owners need to say, we're glad to have you business, but please go put on a mask, come on back and we're glad to have you in the store, that kind of thing. But we, I think until May 11th, this is something, we're, we're- But we, we, I, I think until May 11th, this is something, we, we're, we're true, each time we do something like this, this is new, and something new, we're treading new water, this, you know, and so, but I think it's something that's important for the city right now. It's not going to be convenient, nothing we're doing right now is convenient or particularly pleasant, and all of the, this, this, the inconveniences in, in things of life right now, but it's something that's necessary until we start to come out from under this, this, this pandemic that we're, we're facing right now. I yield. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins, anything further?
Nothing further, Mayor. I, I am in agreement to leaving the language as Mr. Latimer has just last read it. I think that, that covers what we want to do, and that is a great approach, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn, anything further?
I think it's a great motion because a lot of, a lot of the system, they have mentioned to me, say, why they're going to have the employees wear them, and then the public don't wear them. So I think it's a great motion, I think.
Okay, all right. Well, that, I think that's covered everybody, and everybody's had a chance to speak to it. And, and just for the record, I am obviously in favor of it, or I wouldn't have had a special call meeting. So I support the, I support the curfew certainly, and I had not thought about our ability to put the, put the requirement in on customers. I was afraid that might be a little overreaching, but I'm delighted to see that the board is supportive of that. And so with that, with the customers and the employees wearing them, I think that gives the greatest support that we can to keeping this to a minimum. So with a motion and a second, we'll have a roll call vote. If you would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Nay.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Nay.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, by a vote of five to two, the motion carries. And that concludes our business on this day. Lady and gentlemen, if you would, please, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Sistrunk. If you would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver. Alderman Carver to adjourn.
I believe he's already left us.
Alderman Sistrunk?